Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us. Tonight is the June 13, 2003 meeting of the Town of East Fishkill work session. Work session is typically a meeting where the town board gets together to discuss matters of importance to the town. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I just have a couple of announcements, more like I just want to report a little bit on last weekend's activities. Last weekend was a beautiful weekend. I attended the Elks and Boy Scouts Flag Day Ceremony at the Elks facility out on Route 376. And I gotta tell you, I'm invited to this every year, and with the Elks and the Boy Scouts put together for a flag ceremony is just terrific. Try to look for it next year, should be in the paper. It really is a touching ceremony and a really tribute to our flag. That same day, which was a busy day, was on the Sunday, the East Fishkill Historic Society had their strawberry festival. Beautiful day, and what an impressive site. I don't think anybody's here been to the East Fishkill Historic Society, but if you go out there, it's located in Kensington Park, but if you go there, it's just amazing. There's the old house, they have the barn, they have carriages, they replicate, they have an old schoolhouse that they refurbished, an old one-room schoolhouse, and we just moved the ice house there about, oh, what, three, four months ago. It is just a beautiful, beautiful facility, and I don't know any other town that has as nice of historic property as that. And the one thing I did miss was our Railroad Depot had an event also, which is kind of a Sunday where everybody had something going on. So, didn't make the Railroad Depot, but if anybody wants to go check out the East Fishkill, it's down on Railroad Avenue, down, I'll say, down past the Hopewell Inn, just go straight. But what this group has done to bring back, to rehabilitate this old depot is just phenomenal. It's beautiful, and they've done a terrific job. And I don't know when it's open, I do apologize for that, but if you walk the rail trail by it, it's a phenomenal building. So, that's all of my announcements tonight. It's really just reflections of last weekend, so I don't have anything else to say on that. But we will get to the agenda. On the first item on the agenda, I'm always prodded by some members of the Board in our eight years together, Bill Dank, Councilman Dankie and I have gone to other towns, to state of the town addresses. We've been to Fishkill, we've been to Wobbers, and Bill says to me, "Why don't I have one?" Well, I'm cheap, actually. I don't want to spend the money and have the big ceremony, but you know something? It is good to let the people know the state of the town, and the state of the town in East Fishkill is very good. So, that being said, we had just finished up our annual financial report to the State Comptroller. Our comptroller, Mark Posnak, is first going to give us a little report on town finances. So, is that Mark?
You're good.
Oh, go ahead.
As Supervisor mentioned, we filed the annual financial report at the end of April for 2012. You've heard some of this information before, but this is a little bit more detail tonight.
Mark, pull the microphone over to you a little closer.
Okay. So, we'll start with the general fund. Let me see if I can get this. Moving slowly. Okay. Revenues and expenditures for 2012 in the general fund. The town took in just under 11 million in revenues and expended about 11.7 million. The difference between what we took in and what we spent was funded by our fund balance, which was about $855,000. Prior to 2012, when we established the budget for the year, we had expected to use about $925,000. During the year, we increased that by about $130,000 for unforeseen events, the well testing across the street, and a new phone system. The total of what we expected to use was about $1,055,000, so we did about $200,000 better than we expected. In addition to that, we transferred $400,000 from the general fund to the highway fund. Some of the variables in 2012, sales tax was actually higher than expected by about $200,000. There is a new sales tax cap that's going to kick in in 2013. Essentially, we're going to lose that $200,000. We're capped at 1.313 million. There is some potential for growth above that, but the cap pretty much will restrict that type of growth from happening in an annual year in the future. Recreation revenues were up. That's from a variety of different things. An example would be the new basketball league. We took in all of our revenues for the basketball league in the fall of 2012, but we didn't actually spend all of the cost for the league in 2012. Planning fees were more than $100,000 over budget. Interest was short by $20,000. Essentially, since we prepared the budget till the end of the year, interest rates just evaporated. They're at basically zero now. Building fees were about $200,000 less than anticipated. A lot of this is we thought we would see more activity in the west complex, not only there, but in then surrounding areas. Nothing has really developed as of yet, so that explains that shortfall. And mortgage tax and court revenues, which are two of our bigger revenue streams, were pretty much on target. Healthcare and pension costs continued to rise. We've seen about 10% to 20% growth in both these categories over the last several years.
Mark, when you say that we've seen that kind of grow 10%, 10% to 12% each year, correct?
Each year for the best.
So, this is a little difficult to take, but each year or last few years, we've seen those types of increases.
Fund balance. In the general fund, we began the year with about $4.5 million in fund balance. As explained a couple of slides ago, we used about $1.25 million, which left us with about $3.25 million at the end of 2012. For 2013, in the budget, we've appropriated about $375,000, which, if we're on course, would leave us with about $2.9 million at the end of the year. So far, year-to-date, everything is pretty much according to budget. No significant variances on the revenue or expenditure sides. Why is fund balance important? It's what enables the town to make payments early in the year before tax and other revenues have been realized. So, for January and February, if we didn't have fund balance, we wouldn't be able to pay our bills before the revenues for the year start to come in. It allows us to avoid tax spikes in years when we know expenditures will be unusually high. Some years when we plan to have one-off type expenditures, rather than having taxes increase significantly, we can utilize fund balance. And to buffer the town against unexpected drops in revenues and/or sharp increases in expenditures. If mortgage tax revenues were to go away tomorrow, how would we keep afloat for the first several years after that? The state unofficially recommends about 15% to 25% of our annual expenditures to be maintained as fund balance. That would represent a fund balance of $1.7 to $2.9 million. I'm a little bit more conservative than that and would like to see the town always maintain about $2.8 to $3.8 million. So, we're in the ideal zone right now. We just don't want to drop below. So, in order to achieve that, my goal for 2014 would be to appropriate no fund balance, if possible. Maintaining fund balance. In 2012, our expenditures were about, in the general fund, $222,000 more than they were in 2011. If you look just at pension and healthcare costs, they combined increased by about $256,000 from 2011 to 2012. If we took out pension and health insurance costs, the net of all other expenses would have been flat from 2011 to 2012. So, I mean, that's our goal, that we're keeping expenses that we have control over as flat as possible. And where possible, reducing expenses as the Board has done with health insurance and liability insurance changes in the most recent year, as well as investing in a new phone system that should save us about $12,000 a year. Highway fund. Revenues in 2012 outpaced our expenditures by about $200,000. We had planned to use none of, no fund balance, and we actually did better than that by $200,000. And we also had that $400,000 transfer from the general fund. So, we began, highway fund was pretty well depleted after the big storms and other events in prior years, so we only had $43,000 in fund balance to begin the year. The results of operations in that transfer was a positive $602,000, so we ended 2012 with $645,000 in fund balance, which is a really good result. For 2013, we've appropriated no fund balance, so if all goes to plan, we'll maintain that $645,000. Ideally, we'd like to see somewhere between $800,000 and $1.2 million. Everything's not always ideal. Challenges for highway, to continue to grow fund balance, but more important than that is to increase our paving budget. If we don't continue to invest in paving, we'll end up paying for it down the road, no pun intended. And be prepared for harsher winters than we've had in the past. We've been a little bit lucky these last two years, and we've saved in salt and subcontracting due to milder winters than in previous years. Special districts, I've just focused on the water districts, really. There's several water districts where their revenue is not currently sufficient to support their operating costs, and we're in the middle of an analysis to determine what rates those districts ought to have. These water districts are pretty simple. You've got water rents, and they need to cover expenses. There aren't a whole lot of variables there. O&M rates should ideally be a little bit more than our annual operating costs because there are going to be some years where we have unanticipated or anticipated capital requirements or major repairs. The thing about general fund and highway fund is there can be good years. As we've seen in highway, if you have a mild winter, we can have a good year. With general fund, we could get more sales tax than we expected, or more mortgage taxes, or find some savings. With these water districts and sewer districts, there are no good years. There's just no positive variables that can really happen. It's either what we expected or bad, so again, that's all the more reason to expect slightly higher revenues than expenditures. Summary, the general fund is in great shape, but we need to keep it that way despite the challenging atmosphere. Highway fund is in pretty good shape, but we need to look to build up fund balance. That's probably going to take five to 10 years to get it where we need to be, and our paving budget. Water districts, the majority, are fine, but there's definitely need to revise the rate structure for some. That's pretty much it. Again, for 2013, to date, we're trending according to budget, so we expect, there's no reason not to expect us to hit our targets for the year at this point.
Couple of things, Mark. I'd just like to mention, number one, I would like to see the fund balance for the general fund be a little over $3 million. And we did use expenditures that we hadn't anticipated for developing the wells across the street. I think that was probably $150,000, $170,000 like that.
And we will potentially recoup that.
We will recoup that at some point in the future. The other couple of variables, I mean, I'm glad we did put the salt, computers on the salt spreaders that did help us in the salt, you know, as far as purchase of salt for the winter for the highway department. So, and we do have to recoup some of the money that we've outlaid from the general fund, though, and as I said, developing wells across the street, and we'll do the best we can, but I think, I think we're running pretty tight here, so. Any questions, any thoughts? Questions for the comptroller?
Just that, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You can go. All right. My question is, will, you said you were doing investigations into the water districts, Wynwood, Shandor, Fishkill Plains, I didn't catch the fourth one. After that is done, Mark, will the Board then approve increases in?
Right. The plan is to present-
Because we're not allowed to, the town as a whole cannot be paying for?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes. The plan is to present with you my remediation plan.
Okay.
Essentially, so that they are self-supporting districts.
My only question was, or comment, the highway fund balance was $645,000, so according to the state, they like 15% to 20%, so we're towards the low end.
Yeah, it's not quite the same projection for highway. They don't have the same potential variables as the general fund does. I think with highway, we're more, the percentage of fund balance can be a little bit lower.
Okay.
They don't recommend the same levels for the highway fund. So, again, I think if we're in that $800,000 range, we'd be really good.
But $645 isn't in bad shape?
$645 is not bad, it's just not perfect.
Not a-
Yep.
What, were we at the beginning of the year, 45?
We were at 45. Yeah, this is something I would expect to take time-
Moving in the right direction.
Yeah.
Peter, anybody else?
No.
All right. Mark, I'd like to thank you very much for that. You know, you're our comptroller, you keep an eye on the money, and I certainly appreciate that. I think you do a terrific job, and of course, all these council people know Mark is here, and always give him a call or drop in, and will be happy to answer anybody's questions. You know, one of the reasons I would like to point out that we're in good financial health was when I, I think the year after we took office, after I took office, and about two years after that, we did financial trend analysis. We had an outside firm come in and take a look at our expenditures and our fund balance, and the firm made some recommendations, which we adopted. So, I think, and that was back, oh, 2006, 2008, so I'm really glad that we did that back then, because I do think it put us on a good path for financial health. When you look at some of the water projects that we've completed, too, you know, the Fishkill Plains water, that was, and that was a long one coming, the Fishkill Plains Water District was about, I mean, when I first took office, I had people coming to my office with bottles of brown water, putting it on the desk and saying, "I want," you know. And again, it's a little bit like, really, we didn't own the darn thing. So, we would schlep up to Board of Health, and we'd put it on the Board of Health's desk, and they'd say, "It's a secondary contaminant, it's not really a health issue." Well, that really was not an ideal answer for any of us. It took us years. We ended up buying the system and spent much money. I think the filters alone were like $500,000, but we put the filters in, and it fixed this for, I think there's 800 residents and businesses on Fishkill Plains, and two schools. And these, and for the people in Whirly Homes, these are big fixes. They take a long time, but I think that's one of the ones that we're, we worked at for a very long time. Hamlet Sewer, thank goodness, our engineer's not with us tonight, but Scott Bryan is our town engineer. We hired him back in 2006, 2007, and I think that was the first project that, well, he brought it in under budget. It was still wildly over what the original engineers had projected, but he had the numbers, and he brought it in under budget, and he does a terrific job of that. So, and Wildflower Sewer is progressing. And one thing I would like to say, we hired a junior engineer for downstairs, and we're very glad he did, because the engineering firm that did the design for this Wildflower line really needed some watching, and our junior engineer did a terrific job in going through everything and picking up a lot of issues before they became problems. Now, we talk about water, wastewater. I believe we're up to, when I took office, I think we had four water districts. I believe now we have 10 water districts, three sewer districts. We have a very good operator, BRI is our operator. And one of the things that this, and I think the Board shares this with me, that if there's one thing the government should do, maintain good water and wastewater facilities, and that's what we aim to do. We acquired a couple of properties, as everybody knows. We've gotten the Lime Killin' Sports Facility over there, which is really a wonderful piece of property. We purchased that from IBM and the Cannon Property across the street, and that's a very, very interesting project going forward. 157 acres, and what did we pay for that, Mark? $1.2 million? It was a very good-
Great deal.
Very good price. We didn't just roll over, we took it as a ban, and a ban is a bond anticipation. We will pay this off in the future, and the interest rates on that ban just went up from 1% to 1 and 1/4%.
Correct.
So, it doesn't sound like a lot of money, but you can actually see where the interest rates are going, and it would appear that they'll be trending up. But that was a very good, very good purchase. I'd just like to talk under state of the town, a little bit about the status of operations. Again, bringing engineering and inspection services in-house, we had always subbed them out to contract vendors. Now, we've got an engineer, a junior engineer, a couple of new inspectors, and I gotta tell you, the work that we're getting done now is a lot better, and it's a lot more cost-effective. Outsourcing, though, on the other hand, we'd always blacktopped in-house. We always, our highway department had always done blacktopping. Historically, we did it in-house. Well, about three years ago, our blacktop foreman retired, so we talked to the highway superintendent, and you know, he was a little hesitant, but he said, "Look, we'll try bidding it out." And we bid it out, and it's really been very good, very helpful, because the cost that we bitted out at is a lot lower than we could have done it using our own men, our own trucks. Also, it ties up our whole highway department during paving season. This way, we still have crews to go out doing drainage and tree work, and we're getting blacktopping done at the same time. So, I think it's been very cost-effective that way. Unfortunately, we do have headwinds, and this is what I call my headwind category. The New York State, this is a regulatory environment. I mean, Mark, when you talk about we expected to see building permits and other things increase, I mean, the economy just does not seem to be improving a whole heck of a lot, no matter what the stock market and these economists say. So, we don't see the revenues we would anticipate, and we were always conservative with our anticipated revenues, but the environment is very difficult out there. Dutchess County sales tax cap is another one. It cost us $200,000 right off the bat. And unfortunately, Dutchess County has no legal obligation to give us a sales tax. They always have, and the county executive has capped it. And also, we have the 2% property tax cap. It's not that I like to raise taxes. We have to raise taxes for our operations. I mean, if you look at the town hall, this town hall is, what, 40 years old and is paid for. I don't think we spend money in reckless manner, but I do think the sales tax cap was really needed for the schools, because the schools are, I think, LaFter Central School is 74% of your total tax bill, Town of East Fishkill, we're about 14% of your tax bill, so. But we all have the tax cap to deal with, and I'll leave it at that. But I think even with this 2% sales tax, the 2% property tax cap, we're doing okay.
Yeah, we've met it every year, and we're still in excellent shape.
Yeah, and we actually kept our tax increases in town because of the economy. We tried to keep our tax increases at the town level flat for the previous two or three years, and then once we said, "Well, we can raise it maybe 4%," but that's okay. Actually, it just makes us tighten our belt a little bit more. Dutchess County Water, I'm not going to talk about the county water too much, except to say that I was a little uneasy when I signed the county contract for water, and everybody said to me, "Oh, it's county water, can't be bad." I'll just leave it at that. But otherwise, with the headwinds, I tell you the truth, the Town of East Fishkill's doing very well. We have a good fund balance, and I gotta tell you a little something about our professionals. Our engineer's not here tonight, but we have some of the best professionals, our comptroller, our attorney. Our planning people are just terrific. I really want to thank them a lot, because when you hear them talk, like, we're talking today about water rates and things like that, and they really, they really get into the details, and they really know what they're talking about. So, it's really, really a good thing to have these professionals onboard. Talk a little bit about pending projects. We're going to wrap up our hazard mitigation plan. We'd experienced flooding, oh, I think it was 2007, 2009, we had significant flooding in areas of the town. We're doing a hazard mitigation plan. Hopefully, they'll have to give us some federal money to address some construction projects to mitigate flooding being one of the main ones. The development of the Cannon wellfields, which we'll talk about a little later in the meeting, we bought the Cannon property across the street, what we thought was a very good price, and we only suspected there was water over there, and it cost us $150,000, like I said, $470,000 to our test wells and all that. It's an expensive process. But we've located, we feel we can probably produce close to a million gallons a day across the street. So, having that here of good water is a very, very big asset. And then, of course, across the street, too, we'll be looking into maybe a housing project on one side. Possibly, we'd like to see some senior housing. There's a need for senior housing in the Town of East Fishkill, and we kind of debate this amongst ourselves, what kind of housing is needed, I think senior above all, but I'd like to see a mixed use, too. You know, you have kids coming out of college that need a place to live, so we'll be looking at that, because the Town of East Fishkill, we have a lot of different, I say, demographic groups with the kids coming out and the seniors, and we need to provide housing for them. And I believe that we can do a project across the street, and then that would pay the ban, hopefully, in the future. That was always the plan, we'd sell off a portion, and we'll pay off the ban. And of course, there's possibly the Whirly Homes Water is one of our pending projects. We've been looking at this. We had folks from Whirly Homes here in 2010, I believe it was at our budget meeting in November, probably 40, 45 people were here for that. We took that, and we, the engineer did some rough numbers over the next few months. I ran into some of the Whirly Homes people, like, I think, a month or two later, and then we started talking what the cost would be, because if we were to purchase Whirly or just fix it, there's a cost, and we know Whirly Homes water system needs a lot of work, and we'll discuss that a little bit later. That's one of the pending projects. And like Fishkill Plains, it took us so long to fix that, and Whirly, ever since that meeting, has never been far out of our mind, but as you'll see later on, there's logistic issues, but we feel we can get this thing done. And I do have a couple unfinished projects. Hillside Lake Stormwater Project, we made two grant applications. Unfortunately, we did not, we were not successful, but we would like to modify the stormwater system over at Hillside Lake. This year, this time around, we have three grant applications pending all at once with the Green Innovation Grant Program, New York State Clean Water Fund, and Congressman Maloney's office is actually helping us with the, with an application. And of course, the Hopewell Precision Superfund Site, which was really, when we bought the property across the street, there's a Superfund Site up Route 82, and it was contaminated by a small industrial business up there, TCA groundwater. Unfortunately, once we find a suitable source, and EPA agrees that this is a good source for that water, EPA runs out of money. So, I feel terrible for the people up at the Superfund Site. I just spoke with Congressman Maloney again the other day. He really is dedicated to getting them funding, but right now, it's a tough, it's a tough call. But that is one of our unfinished projects, and Congressman Maloney, I'd say, is very, very sincere, he says he wants to get that done. Just a couple of other little things before I wrap up. The town highway superintendent's been working with our engineering department, and the result has been much better work in regards to roads and stormwater than with our previous contract engineers. We do have a couple of concerns. Beekman National Guard Facility, the New York State Army National Guard is building a 750,000-square-foot maintenance and repair facility in the Town of Beekman, right over the town line. Beekman, at the time, thought it was a great idea. They thought it'd generate jobs. Unfortunately, us in East Fishkill, now all the traffic's going to come through East Fishkill. So, we had a meeting with the National Guard, and Ethel, would you say it was a fruitful meeting, and they heard our concerns the other night?
No, they didn't want to hear it.
They didn't want to hear it. But they are the feds, and they are the state, and basically, they said they are going to start construction in October. Please send us a list of your concerns. So, we've spoken with Senator Kirsten Gilibrini's office. They will send a letter on our behalf with our traffic concerns, and we suspect the National Guard will actually set up and take notice. That's really, I have to say, I would like to say, I did like to say one good thing about our planning and zoning boards. Our chairs, Lori G. and Norma Drummond, are terrific. The members on our boards, the zoning planning, and all of our other boards are volunteers, and they do a great job. And I'd like to thank our volunteers, our clerk, our assessor, our tax receiver, and all these employees, because we have a lot of really good employees here in the Town of East Fishkill, and I think they do an excellent job. I'd like to thank the town board. They do work hard, and the focus of all of our endeavors is and always shall be doing what is right for the Town of East Fishkill. Talk to our professionals, talk to anybody, that's really the bottom line. Let me just say, the Town of East Fishkill is doing well, and it's only due to the conservative efforts of a lot of dedicated people, and I'm really thankful to have them on the board and our professionals and our whole staff. I'm really thankful for that. So, Councilman Dankie, that is my state of the town.
Well done.
There is no-
Food?
No singing, no food, nothing like that, but I just want to let you know the town's doing well, and we have really good, dedicated people, and we have a lot of challenges and projects ahead of us. That being said, I'll move to number two on the town board work session. Number two being Whirly Homes Water. Mark, if you want to, you're ahead of me. Whirly Homes Water Supply and Improvements, as I said, it was November, and I think actually the people from Whirly Homes came in November and probably December, meaning 2010, and brought up their very valid concerns. And one thing I would like to say about that, we've met, again, and it was the same thing as like with Fishkill Plains, so you go up there to the Board of Health, you put the water- So, you go up there to the Board of Health, you put the water out, the water bottle on the table, and they say, "It's a secondary contaminant. It's not health issue." And that seems to still be their, their, their position. Uh, we were up there in January, and we met with them again and talked about Whirly Homes. Um, and, uh, they said that we'd like to see something done. Um, we've cited the company. I don't know if they have. Supposedly, they're supposed to cite them for some, some minor infraction. And, uh, I know our engineer asked if they had ever done a pressure test, because I understand one of the issues in Whirly Homes is a lack of pressure. And they said, "Well, our pressure testing equipment is broken, and when we get it fixed, we will be testing the water." That was, uh, I think that was the last week in January, and, uh, we haven't heard anything on any pressure testing with Dutchess County, so. That's Dutchess County Health Department, but, you know, you're our constituents. So, that being said, we'll do what we can for you, but there, there are logistical issues. So, if you want to go to first slide, Mark? Mark's going to do my slide presentation. Whirly Homes Water Districts, boy, it's hard to read that. Whirly Homes is the blue one in the middle. Crest Court is that other part of Whirly Homes, which is across the road there. And then we have, to the left of it, is Sprout Glen. Uh, it shows the existing pump house there, and the water storage tank is identified just next to the blue to the right.
Is that, that's the current underground storage tanks?
Well, that's one of the questions. I believe is the current underground, probably 50-year-old steel water storage tank, which presents its own concerns, obviously. Um, that, and the well, well, the wells, one well we know is in service. Um, we believe the other well is probably impacted. One of the things we have in the Town of East Fishville, we talk water, is there's issues with iron and manganese. Um, it comes out of the ground, it comes up in the water, and sometimes you don't see it, but when you chlorinate, it creates a silt that drops out. That was our big problem in Fishville Plains. Um, we know how to build the filters now. It took us a while, and Board of Health dragged us through the, through the coals, but these filters work. And we've actually cleaned up the water out there, and if we were to use these wells, that would be what we would do. But I say, if we were to use these wells, because in our discussion, probably be better to get Whirly Homes on another system altogether. So, let me see. Next, next one, Mark? Oh, you're fast. The, uh, the engineer's not with us today. We did do, he did write for me some PowerPoint things. Uh, no redundancy in supply wells. We believe Whirly Homes is running on one well, which is a violation of Near State, uh, Health Law. Elevated in iron and manganese levels, the aging buried, buried water tank that Councilman Del Sandro inquired about. Undersized water distrib- distribution piping, and there is no emergency power or alarms. If I believe, I think on every one of our systems, we have emergency alarms, we have backup generators. And, uh, and we talk about the undersized water distribution piping. I would just like to point out, you know, the system was built years ago. I don't think they, I don't know what the sizing recommended, uh, recommendations were at that time, but we, we know they are undersized for their current use. So, he's already ahead of me. What can be done? We've been evaluating alternatives for supplying water to Whirly Homes and performing water distribution improvements. These include, and there's a couple of ways to do it, down supplying the owner-operator Hopeful Service Corp., or purchasing the, the, the system altogether. Two ways we could do this. I mean, we did, we did this for years before we purchased Fishville Plains water ourselves. We actually, for Refu, we purchased water from Fishville Plains. Um, and we had a mastrometer, and, and quarterly, we'd send them a check. We could do the same thing with Hopeful Service Corp. We could, we could run a main out there, and we could just sell, sell you guys through them clean water. That would be one thing. Because when we look at this, ultimately, everybody in Whirly Homes has to pay for this. It can't be paid by, as Councilman Walker was asking about before, they can't be paid for by anybody in the general fund. Uh, a, a, a water system has to pay for itself. So, we look to try to keep things manageable. You've been on a flat rate probably forever.
I have a question about that. They did recently raise our rate. I was confused. I'm like, oh, maybe they're doing something.
Yeah.
I assumed that they were enhancing or they were going to upgrade the system, so they raised our rates.
They did.
But no improvement. So, I'm like, all right, I'm confused.
This is true, and that was, because we, we sometimes would follow the, we'd probably track them once in a while, and there was an application to Public Service Commission. Tom, our attorney, do you remember what the increase in rates had to do with?
No explanation.
It was, I don't think it was improvements to the system.
Was to pay back a loan that they had made.
From another system.
From another system from years ago.
Well, that's not fair.
Because the rates are regulated and set by the Public Service Commission. And they, uh, in response, I think, to the town's providing the health department, the health department providing them, they filed an application. Uh, and also through these, um, when they sold the Fishville Plains water system to the town, the Public Service Commission discovered some inter-fund transfers for Whirly and other districts that they own, and they had to straighten that all up with the Public Service Commission.
They own, they own Fishville Plains, we bought that. They own, we bought it from them, and they, they own several districts in the Town of East Fishville.
Maybe that's their plan. Maybe their plan is to just let it go to, and then that's where the town, maybe that's their plan.
Well, and, and if you want to speak to that, Tom, we see, what, what happens is when you build a subdivision, you know, a Board of Health will say, "Over 50 houses, you will have to have public water." A lot of developers will install a public water system and maintain it, and I would think sometimes they think, "Oh, we'll make money on this." Well, it's highly regulated. It's not really a money-making situation, and a lot of times, they do just let things go to heck and walk away, and...
And by state law, if that happens, it automatically reverses to the town, and then the town has to create a district and take over the operations of the system. So, that's what would happen if they did.
So, eventually, would that happen for us? I mean, you know.
It's, it's possible. They may walk, or they may just keep it bumping along. We don't know. We can't speak for the owners, so.
You know, I spoke to the owner, and he basically said, when they bought that water system, they thought it was going to be a turnkey operation. And like, it's the day of the closing, it was disaster, because the woman, I guess, who owned it previously, I don't remember the name, was like, "Okay, you got a problem here, you got a problem there," and it was just like a list of problems. So, she kind of sold off her, they inherited it, and they don't want to deal with it. They just wanted to collect the revenue. They don't want to fix the problem. The problem is, this has been a problem, not just for, not for the 13 or 14 years that I've been there.
Right.
Apparently, 20 years prior to that.
Yeah.
So, so there's those who live in the community who just be happy to live like that, but I don't live like that.
Exactly.
I don't, yeah.
Exactly.
I'll never be used to that.
Exactly.
I didn't grow up like that. I didn't grow up with...
And we don't want, and we don't want you to live like that. Um, and just so you know, this is a workshop. We typically don't take public comments. Otherwise, we'd have the microphone and all that for you. I don't mind if you ask questions because, but, um, you bring up some very good points. I would just say that the people that purchased Whirly Homes, uh, you know, they're, they have engineering backgrounds. They have backgrounds. I would suspect they've done their due diligence, so although they say we were unaware of all these issues, I, they have a, they have a pretty good background in, in that type of a field.
Can I ask, Tom, when, um, what's it called? What's the name? Hopeful Service Corp. If they, they had to petition the Public Service Commission for a rate increase.
Correct.
Does the Public Service Commission look and see what kind of records of maintenance that they have been doing throughout the...
Well, they look as far as the financial records, the cost and expenses, the regulation as to the quality of water and functioning of systems, the Department of Health.
Okay.
And we actually wrote our opinion letter to the Public Service Commission saying we didn't feel a rate increase was warranted, but they went ahead anyway and did that. Um, anyway, back to that. So, we can sell the water to, to you guys, or we can take it over and fix it. And now, it's even gotten more so. I mean, so it was problems for 40 years ago, and there are significant problems. And we, and we, our engineer's very good about crunching numbers and trying to figure out what this is going to cost, and it's a high number. We would like to keep you guys, like, in a range, pretty much what everybody at the other, the other water districts pay. Well, like you say, there's people that have been like this for 40 years, and they're fine. They pay the flat rate. Their water's so livable. They'll live with it. Now, the problem is, and Tom, as you know from Sackmore, what happens if we do move ahead to purchase the system? We need to establish a, a water district.
Right. What, what the process would be is that the, the engineer, when the supervisor goes through the rest of it, there's different options. If the town sold water to Hopeful Service and they agreed to buy it, that would at least give a clean supply of water. Uh, and it would be there if the power goes off, et cetera, so that, and that would only affect the water rates somewhat.
But I'd like to go just with the process of the vote, because that's...
Correct. So, what we normally do is when we finish the analysis, the board will come to the community and say, "This is, uh, the proposal." A might be to acquire the system, make it a, a fully functional town system, uh, and it's X dollars per year for that cost. The second might be solely to sell the water to Hopeful Service. They still operate the distribution system, and the cost is whatever.
Such and such.
Um, and so, there's, there might be a C, which could be some other alternative. After one or two informational meetings with the community, then is a formal process where the town board conducts a public hearing to consider establishing a town water district to encompass the area. And then, uh, they, there would be a vote of the community to decide, um, if, let's say, option A, purchasing it was, was the, uh, preferred choice, then everyone who owns property within the district would have to come in and vote. Uh, and you need approval of the owners of 51% of the assessed value of all the property within the district in order to go forward. Our experience has been that while the rates adjust at the beginning, with the town operating a district, usually, the, the cost is very stable, and of course, the, um...
The quality of the water will be a lot better.
Quality of the water and the operation of the system is better. One of the big fears here is, of course, the unknown in the distribution system. And the engineers are studying as best they can, but there are any form of plans that show the size of the mains, et cetera, and they have a feeling it's, it's spaghetti.
Yeah, and we'll get to that in a minute. Well, I'd like to go back to the vote thing, because when we started talking, when, when you people came, when the Whirly Homes people came in November, I think of 2010, met with the engineer the next day, we started discussing what it would cost, and then some people were in, I think, at the December meeting, and I said, "This is what we're looking at. This is what you're paying. You're paying $200 a quarter. We're looking at something that could be..." Oh, no, I think it was less than $200 a quarter. I forget what it is a quarter. It was like, it was a lot less, 75 or something.
It was. It went up to almost 76.
Yeah, but this is what it would be, and some of the people who were outside said, "Well, that's not going to fly." So, this is kind of the tight rope we may be walking with Whirly Homes, where we're going to need 51% of the vote. On the other hand, this may be, if we're going to sell the water, at least you can get clean water. That might be, that's like, not the best, but it's an option.
But that won't fix any sort of pressure problems.
Pressure problems, no, but you would have clean water.
Then redundancy is taken care of, correct?
Yes, and, and storage, too.
And 51% of the vote isn't of the people who vote. A, a person who doesn't vote is a no vote.
Right.
Correct?
That's right.
That's correct. Yeah, if the owner's a 51%, actually vote need for...
You could have a majority of the people who actually vote for it, but it could fail if a lot of people don't show up.
Because if you don't come and vote, it's counted as a no vote.
A no vote.
And it, and, and if I, just one last thing on, on the vote situation, um, it's, it, who's on the deed, correct, Tom?
Yes.
So, if, like, if the husband is on the deed, or the husband-wife, husband-wife, then you have two votes in the household. If it's only the husband, or only the wife, you have one vote in the household. So, that's the vote. And that month or two afterwards, when we discussed it with some of the Whirly Homes people, they said, "This could be a concern. This could be a problem." So, this is why we had to kind of do a couple of different scenarios, so. Um, next, next slide, Mark? As we said, town supplying water would not require a formation of a district. We're borrowing on behalf of the new water district. Um, cost of improvements required to supply water would be recovered in the water rates. We would have to give water to you, and then we would just charge you in, in the, in the water rates. But the internal distribution improvements would not be included. The town acquisition of Hopeful Service Corp., this alternative would require a formation of a district, which would require the vote. Borrowing for the improvements would be voted on by residents of the newly formed district. Debt repayment would be collected through assessment. That's where, now, what, right now, you pay a quarterly bill, but when the town owns it, and we put money into pumps, any capital improvements, anything like that, you get charged in your property tax bill. So, there's that, and then you have your quarterly owing out. You don't have any capital improvements, basically, because you don't. But if we own it and we fix it, they would appear in your tax, in your property tax bill. And I'm not a tax attorney, but sometimes, you know, that's a write-off on your, on your taxes at the end of the year, and I'm not a tax attorney. Um, debt repayment would be collected. Operation maintenance costs would be built quarterly, as, as they are now. Acquisition, town ownership would allow distribution system improvements. Debt would be determined by the extent of these improvements. Um, and it says here, residents would vote on the final scope and cost, and as, as our engineer wrote down, we could phase these in over time. You know, we could get the system, we could own the system, we could do somewhat, you know, maybe we could do mains. We can get the water there, get you clean water, maybe do some mains, and then maybe we wait two years, and then we start doing other improvements. It's a tough one. We, to be honest with you, um, oh, Little Switzerland Water System is another one we purchased years ago, and they have a very old distribution system, and we basically have been chasing lease up in Little Switzerland for 30 years. Um, actually, we finally seemed to have gotten a handle on it, but, uh, you know, one thing we had looked up there, too, is doing a phase, doing this road this year, and trying to spread it out over, over, over a few years, and we would identify the worst ones and do them first. Now, the logistics part, the potential water sources. Fishville Plains Water, which we purchased, uh, has a supply of water. Fishville Plains Water, right now, is servicing those 800 businesses, residents, and the two schools. It is kind of maxed out. We are putting meters on over in Dogwood Knolls. Board of Health says to us already, "You're, you're, you're, you're flat up against the wall with this one, and there's really technically not enough storage." These are some of the issues that stop us from bringing it over to you. Across the street, we have a million gallons. We think we can pump a million gallons a day out of there. That would be more than enough for you. How do we get it from here down to Whirly Homes? That's the big thing, and I think, uh, our engineers put together a map here. Alternate source routes. So, uh, and we, we talked about how we, we could run it pretty much, um, let me see, from Fishville, from Fishville Plains, we could run it pretty much a poten- potential equa- uh, connection, I think, would be over to New Hard Place over in that direction. You would actually be going through Fishville Plains Water, through Refu, through Refu, too, and then over to you guys, but, but it's not that far. Here, it's far. Further, let me put it that way. It's further. Yes, sir, I know you've been wanting to ask a question.
Would you know the development, the new development behind ours? Who supplies that water?
That's supply.
We do. Yeah. They're on the town system, I believe, correct?
There is an easement.
What's that?
There is an easement.
Yep.
Development, we're in.
Yep, we know that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just be, right, we're there.
Right, but we started...
Rather than running all the way over.
Uh, well, we'll, we'll talk about that, because the engineer knows about the easement, and he knows, and I don't know why he drew it this way. He's not with us tonight, and we're going to have more meetings about this anyway, so I can't answer that tonight. Uh, but again, we get back to Fishville Plains, we've got this capacity, we've got the storage problem. So, we'll see what we can, you know, it says, it was probably, what, five, six months ago, we talked to Lake Walton, and Lake Walton was doing subdivision out there. They were doing a project. They, they actually turned, said they would turn over the wellfields to us, which was, we thought, a great thing. Unfortunately, there's problems with those wellfields, because we were going to start developing those wellfields, tie them into Fishville Plains, it was a 1,500-foot pipe, and then we would be, but those wells didn't pan out. So, uh, that was one of our, we were very hopeful about that, but it didn't work, so. Be careful when somebody gives you a well. That's all I can say. And here we are, Fishville Plains Water District, uh, as I said, approximately 800 homes and businesses. Their average ga- daily demand is about 200,000 gallons per day. Peak, it's in the summertime with sprinklers, 400,000. Expansion of it would require, and we've discussed, doing a drilling, an additional well, but it's a tight site. Then, we also have the issue with the storage. But approximately 1,000 linear feet of pipe would be required for the connection to Whirly Homes, as, as the engineer has designed it. When we come to the East Fishville townwide water, we know that there's water there. We're working on the development of the wellfield. But I would ask the town board, uh, in the next meeting or so, to allocate a little bit more, more money out of the general fund to, uh, continue with the development of the wells across the street. Uh, we will have to do adequate storage, of course, and filtration, because you know it's most likely iron and manganese. But the, the number jumps up to 6,500 linear feet of pipe to get to Whirly Homes. We could do fire flow with, if we could provide that, if we could do distribution improvements at Whirly, so. And then that's really, these are the two sources that we have here. Whirly, uh, Fishville Plains and the East, East Fishville townwide water across the street. Now, he, Scott has put in some improvement clause, but these are just estimates. Uh, for Fishville Plains, we need a new storage tank, new well and testing, filtration testing, interconnection engineering, and the total's about 575,000, not including if we have to purchase Whirly Homes. purchase Worley Homes. You know, because there's still, we don't own Worley Homes water system. Do we purchase it? To be all honest, it's kind of a slap in the face, but if you have to purchase it, that might be something you just have to do. The estimated Worley average cost per home is $800 per year excluding whatever the purchase price would be, if we can go to, to Fishkill Plains. Now, townwide water, the interconnection pipe jumped from, I think it was 150,000, to 975,000. And then the wellfield development, cost being portioned between various systems. And we're going to talk about the system across the street a little later in the meeting. Actually, we're, we were going to provide water for the Hope Well Precision Superfund site. Superfund running out of money, we've decided we were just going to continue to develop that, that area, that, that water resource, because of issues we have with the county water system, because of issues like we have with Worley Homes. So, uh, that will be a portion, that million dollars to develop, that will be a portioned over different users, and we'll talk about that in a little while. But you can see the, the, the huge increase in the interconnection pipe. But, our goal in the end is to provide water to Worley Homes at a rate comparable to a regular water system such as, such as Fishkill Plains. We've retained the services of Benaroleros, uh, they're a very good engineering firm, they know their water, and they're going to create a water supply model to determine the final scope of improvements required to take town, make townwide improvements, including Worley Homes. And then, once we get this, it'll help us get a better idea of what the cost will be to bring, if we have, if we have to bring water, if the county can't fix the water problem, because the people at Hope Well Glen have their own problem, if we have to bring water over there, if we have to bring water to Worley Homes, if we can do this, the model will tell us how big a tank, where the tank needs to be, how big the pipes are, how many wells. So this, and we should have this done probably in about three, four weeks, about a month. So we'll be able to have a real handle on the what-if scenarios, what if we need this pipe here? And then we can really get a handle on what the true costs are going to be. So we've started that, and we just engaged their services at the last voting meeting. So we'll see. And, that's it. The next step, we'll have to see. We'll be having another meeting with Worley Homes people. Um, now, what are you doing? Turns the light out on, he's like the guy that pulls me offstage.
We know when the decision is that we should be here for Worley Homes. You're saying, you said three to four weeks?
Uh, three to four weeks, we're going to have the modeling done. Then our guy can sit down and say, okay, the modeling says, if we put, it's a what-if model, it's a computer model, what if we need this much water here, how do we get it there? Maybe Fishkill Plains will work, I don't know. At the, at this point, we don't think it will. But once we get the modeling done, we'll know for sure what's going to work and how to get the water best to you. But I think as far as Worley Homes is concerned, as it was in 2010 or 11, when I spoke to you back then, is the price and the vote. And that's basically what it's going to come down to.
I have a question about the vote, too, I'm sorry. My last question. Um, you said it's a district vote, so does that mean just our development, or is it like?
Everybody in your district.
Worley Homes, who is it, who's had a service by Worley Homes? As the district, that would be, right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Block party.
I have a big block party.
Thank you.
And, and, and I understand, we talk about, we had this, you know, presidential way, right across the street from you guys. When I first took office, they didn't have water. I felt terrible. I took, I would take a shower, and I feel terrible for those people knowing, they had to wait till midnight till they had enough water to take a shower, you know? And so we ran that water line, actually, as part of Refuge Two to them, you know? And I still think you guys from that meeting, and you know, it's a terrible thing. It's going to be hard to see what we can do, but you know, we have some ideas, and if, if the, if the district, if the people who are Worley Homes want to move forward, we can do this. Okay?
I know we're not supposed to speak, but the whole water thing with the Worley Homes is, once that water issue hopefully is resolved, and then the whole thing about the roads, how do you look like?
Right.
You never do anything to the roads.
Then we can start, then we can start repairing the roads.
It's a snowball.
Yeah. Oh, I know.
I mean, I've driven through Worley Homes, but like
I know.
I didn't want to buy a house, maybe, or like, at the time.
Yeah, but it will be, it will be nice. Well, we would look foolish if we were to do the road and then, you know, and we'll find out where we go with this water, and I agree with you, and the next thing then, we'll be working with the highway superintendent to get the roads done in Worley Homes. And as Dennis says, you can't do one road, when you do Worley Homes, you have to do them all. And so that would be the plan, so. We need to see where we go with this, and in a few years, maybe we put this all behind us. Okay? All right, well, that's it for my Worley Homes thing. Any, any questions on the board?
No, I've, I've, I've driven around Worley Homes with Dennis, and the road situation is, as Dennis is well aware, but to fix the roads and then tear it up to put in water mains, but, yeah, so, but you're correct.
Well, and one of the other problems with Worley Homes, with all due respect, is we're not really even sure where the water mains are. I don't think anybody has a map, and nobody really knows. So, yeah, it's, it's a challenge. But we have very, very good people on staff, and let's see what we can do. Okay? All righty. Anybody, Nick, did you have any questions?
Just, I think it's going to be a challenge to, you know, educate the residents who don't know mu- much about the water. Who's going to do that? I mean, we can supply them with the information that we'll have, but I, I think neighbors have to talk to neighbors, and you have to really
No doubt.
Get together and, you know, unite.
Yeah, once we get the model done, and we get the actual cost, and you guys need to go out, and I think we should actually do, um, probably a district-wide mailing, the town could do a district-wide mailing to everybody in the district, to maybe, maybe the next door, or the following, when we're ready, with our ducks in a row, with our information meeting with A, B, or C, we'll send out a letter to everybody in the district, say, this is what we're going to do, we'll get everybody here. And then, and we'll see how it goes. I think that's how we do with, with Sagamore, wasn't it, Tom? Yeah. And that one failed, that one failed the first vote. There, there's a small group that was just very against it, and it failed, and their rates went up pretty high after that. And then we had another vote, and then it passed, we took it over, and I think we reduced their rates from like, this was for sewer, from 21, $2,400 a year down to around 17. So, and we've kept it pretty much right on.
And the rates have stayed, as we predicted, very stable.
Yeah, yes. So, uh, we'll see what we can do. All right? It's sort of the way it is. One more question, you said that last time.
So wait, so if you said like, you had a vote and everyone, the vote failed, how many votes do we get? Like, how many times do we keep revoting?
We'll have to think about it, and then we'll have to see if we go back.
Because in that case, there were two, uh, because it failed, and then the rates went up, and there was a request for the community to have a second vote.
And the first vote failed by only a few, but there were a significant number of people who didn't vote, who, who didn't understand that they were voting no.
By not showing up and voting.
So that's why that point has to be made across the, the people.
Adding to the no votes.
So if it was to fail, I would think that something would have to change to make it pass the next time. Either that would be, we hit water rate next door, and cross-cross go way down, or, or your system just goes belly up. You know, I haven't, I wouldn't want that, but let's just hope we can get the people to understand, and maybe we can get this thing done. Okay? All righty. All righty. That's our Worley Homes for tonight. Thank you. Number three, we just talk a quick little bit about the Cannon Property Water Resources. We've discussed across the street and developing the wellfield over there. We have had success, and I am going to ask the board, I think we're going to ask for a little bit of money, more money out of the controller's budget for developing the fields, but, Tom, would you like to talk a little bit about our, our concept for over there?
Right, the concept is, is that the wellfields, if they would develop the ability to, to service the Hope Well Hamlet District, which now is at maximum capacity, would be able to purchase water so that this district would get a more redundant supply, and also there would be an increased supply, because there are many properties within the district that want to connect but can't connect because we don't have the supply. It would also be a source of water for the Hope Well Glen subdivision, and take them off the county water line. Worley Homes, it would be a backup system for Fishkill Plains, perhaps give an extra supply. So in thinking about it, since it's a shared system, if you will, for all these water needs, and if Ryan Drive needed it, they would come in. Mark and I, and Scott are proposing that it be established as what's known as an enterprise fund within the town budget. And what an enterprise fund is, is akin to a district in that anyone who uses the water has to pay for the cost of it. However, instead of it being a formal geographical district, it's a financial district, if you will, within your town budget. So the monies are operated as if it's a, a general fund operation, but the revenue from it equals out the expenses, so it's a wash. But it doesn't require the formation of a district. It's an accepted practice by the state comptroller and by other municipalities, and it's for this kind of a purpose where you have multiple systems paying for it. And so what would happen is, if you would think of it, that the wellfield, the filters, and the water tank would lead to these pipes sticking out. One pipe might go to the Hamlet, one pipe might go to Fishkill Plains, they would have meters, whatever the total amount of water that was pulled out of the system every year by those systems are going to be billed back to those districts as the cost of their water. And that revenue should equal the expenses of the enterprise fund. So it would balance out. But in order to, to get to that point, obviously, it requires, under the town law, the, the town board's allowed to use general town funds to create the improvements necessary to get it up to operation. This may entail eventually a, a borrowing on behalf of the town, but the town is obligated on all bonds, whether it's for a district or not. But the whole operation would be funded by the sale of water. So we do feel that there's enough need for the water that would sell, and the, the way the engineers are proposing it, the wellfield be developed in phases, so that we won't be, you know, sitting there with a $5 million wellfield and enough water for projects that haven't come online yet, so that there would be the ability to
Expand it.
Phase it in with the supplies matching the immediate demand. We're also at a threshold where, in the Hope Well Glen subdivision, they have an obligation to build a storage tank on their site. If, if that district were to be connected to this field, that money, which would near almost a million dollars, would be moved over and would be available to assist in building this infrastructure, and the storage tank, obviously, that would go a long way, because the storage tank, you know, their, their million-dollar tank gets you the foundation, et cetera, and it's not very expensive to add a few rings to increase the capacity on it. So the overall theme is to utilize what is coming online. It solves a lot of problems that we have, because we have districts that are maxing out, that have no redundancy, this would provide, that way, God forbid, the Fishkill Plains field is contaminated, we would have a totally different supply for them already interconnected through some of the pipes. So it breaks up any fear that we have about isolated contamination. So that's the concept. But to get there, we need to advance to the next phase with the wellfield, and that would be to drill another well, do some additional testing, and then make an application to the New York State DUC for a water supply permit.
So that's where we're heading.
How many, how many gallons are we saying we can get a minute, a day out of there?
About a million gallons.
I think a million. A million gallons.
Yeah.
How many gallons a day?
Oh, now you're going to ask numbers, I don't know all the others.
I wonder, well, no, I'm just, I mean, Scott's not here, but how many gallons a day go into
Well, they said
Over that development over there?
Oh, hun, uh,
Okay, you know that one.
Hope Well Glen.
Hope Well Glen.
Uh, right, they, their engineering estimate, I believe, is 180,000 gallons a day.
When they're
When it's completely
When they're built out for domestic consumption. Now, they, they have an issue that with their irrigation system, I think is far exceeding what their estimates were, so they, but ours are, if we did this, obviously, our water would be primarily for domestic use. But if initially we had excess capacity, because, say, Ryan Drive hasn't come on or whatever, we could sell them additional water for irrigating at a higher rate
For a couple of years, yeah.
Until such time as they develop an alternate supply for the irrigation.
Because, yeah, well, we're thinking I'm just wondering if you got 200,000 gallons here.
Yeah.
You got another 100,000 gallons going to, say, Worley.
Yes.
And you got another what going up there.
Yeah.
Are we really going to have enough?
The million, the million is enough, yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's enough.
And the thing is with what we were just talking about with the, and we kicked this around, nobody really wants to supply water for irrigation. Philosophically, it's not what we want to do, but actually, in the long run, if it would help us pay for the fields and all the infrastructure here for maybe two or three years, and we still own the wellfields that Toad Brothers had donated to us years ago, maybe they could be developed into their irrigation source. So that would give them two or three years to do that, and actually help us fund the infrastructure here. Just kind of the thinking.
What about that storage tank? Weren't we on a list, a shortlist for the county?
Oh, we're not talking with the county about
No, I think what Joe referring to is, when the county water line was developed years ago, they identified a, a site on the Cannon Property for a storage tank for the county water line.
Right.
That happens to be a very high point, but it's tree-lined, et cetera, would not be too visible, so that could be the site of a tank for our wellfield system.
Right, for our wellfields.
And they have a lot of the hy- hydrology studies and everything done or anything.
Engineering things to do. The county had wanted it, the last time I spoke with them, it really wasn't on their radar anymore.
But they're not interested in it anymore, so it would be awesome.
We are.
And we own.
But the EPA could possibly
If Ryan Drive was to come on, if they found their money, yeah.
If they found their money.
Absolutely.
And this has been one of the things with EPA, is it's been so complicated, and then this would really solve that problem, they would just run the pipe down and connect, and then there would be a fee that would be paid for the water, and it would supply them with the water, and it solved the source problem.
Yeah.
I think that the, the, the unique thing about is, you're having a source to sell water, but you have no district.
Right.
So it's a very unique
Yet it is, I mean, it's a recognized thing for this and other functions, so the state comptroller, you know, Mark, verified that, is perfectly comfortable with it.
So we don't have to list where this water's going?
Well, no, I mean, there'll be a report prepared. When this modeling is done, it will show you how much the needs are and all the, so come up with the number, so that you'll know if you turned it on tomorrow, you have the ability to sell 300,000 gallons, or whatever it is. the ability to sell three-hundred thousand gallons, or whatever it is.
But I think you'd have to actually have an agreement, too, with, say, Fishkill Plains Water, Worley Homes Water.
Well, since you're the board that operates it, it's just a resolution that sets it off on that.
And we'll have meters.
Yeah, but we don't have to limit who's going to when we create.
I'm sorry?
We don't have to say it's going to Fishkill Plains, Worley Homes, or-
No, no.
These three deals.
But you can commit, like, in other words, you could say, we commit to Worley Homes a hundred thousand gallons a day. So that means if you have a water supply permit for a million, a hundred thousand now is allocated for there, and you can't use that for some-
Gives you a lot of flexibility. Any other questions?
So I think the supervisor started out by saying he's going to ask you, and the controller's going to ask you next meeting.
Well, I did that when the controller stepped out of the room. Mark had walked out, he said, I'm going to be asking you for some money, so.
But this is all money that would essentially be recovered, so it's, you know, it's a loan almost.
It's, it is really, it is a loan from the general fund to the enterprise district, yep. And we will recover this. It's an investment. And I got to tell you, I think a water investment is something we need to make. All right, anybody have questions? Okay. Last, on the agenda was the Cannon Property RFP, because we did purchase the Cannon Property, identified some surplus property that we didn't really need, and we thought, as we've always recognized, a need for housing for seniors and, and the demographics in the town that that would be a good place to put it. So we've had Scott and Tom and some of us have worked on this request for proposals that we'd like to get out next, that the, I'd like to vote, I guess we would have to have a resolution authorizing the-
The RFP.
Yeah, the RFP to go out. So I'd like to have the, the board just take a look at this, and any comments, or basically just, it's a pre, it's, it includes a prequalification to value of requests for the town, for the responding developer. Because we want to make sure we have a developer that is going to be quality, and then we want to make sure the job gets done the way we want it. I don't know if anybody wants to take a look at it?
And it's a little different concept. It's a little modernized process when you're ready to sell a piece of municipal property. So I think it's identified that there's a piece of maybe twenty acres out of the hundred-and-fifty-six that would be available. This RFP would result in you interviewing possible developers of the site. In that dialogue, or in their proposals to you, they're going to give you their conceptual ideas as to what they think they could do on the site to meet your goals. So if your goals was to have a senior project of condominiums, townhouses, maybe some rentals or a mixture of that, and maybe it'd be part senior, part unrestricted, that, that would, the developer would come in and tell you their concept on it. And then you would choose a preferred developer, and then through that process now, would grow the public hearings, et cetera, on the various adjustments to the zoning law that might be needed to engender the project, to have it go forward. And obviously, depending upon how you limited it with respect to meeting the needs of the town, that fluctuates the price for the sale of it. So it's, it's a little different than just, you know, selling a piece of property to a developer and having them come back and develop whatever they think is, is going to succeed. This way, they're going to make proposals to you of their concepts as to what they think the market would bear to meet the needs that you've identified, and then the process goes on beyond that.
And we do not necessarily have to take, let's say, the highest bidder.
No.
Okay, so that's, okay.
So they would, they would come in with their vision for this based on our scenarios.
Correct.
And they could modify them and so forth.
Correct.
And then we could choose a developer based on interviews and their scenario and their concepts, and, and some field trips that we might have made, and so-
Correct.
For example, Nick and I went down before the other project to a place in Westchester that was something that we both thought was first-rate, so we can, we can have that kind of input.
Right. They'd have to give you credentials, references, all kinds of things.
What's good about the prequalification?
Right.
Right, right, right. Okay.
And then they still would have to, they would still go through a rezoning and planning board process, so you're not eliminating anything. But what happens is, in working with the developer, it really throttles, like, if they come in and they say, well, we'll build a hundred units of townhouses, but in exchange for that, we're going to put in this kind of water infrastructure, roads, highways, et cetera. So there may be a trade-off that the, the land's going to sell for a good value, but it may be a little less than if you just auctioned it off at the highest bidder. But you're getting the value of having improvements that are going to be for the benefit of everybody, not just that development. They may come in and say, we'll pay for your wellfield, you know? I doubt it.
But it would be nice. Any other questions? I mean, and just please take the RFP, take a look at it, you know, contact myself, Scott, Tom, sit down, any questions, you know, we'll go over. I would like to get out in June, because I think it's a good time. Again, we just renewed the ban, and this would be a good way to just, you know, pay it off and be done with it, I think.
Where, where would you advertise for this?
That, that's a good question. We were thinking that'd be trade journals. We would also encourage anyone to give us the names of developments that they've seen that they, they would like here in East Fishkill. We'd send it to those developers, we'd have it on our website, you know, all, anything that we could think of, architectural journals, engineering journals. We tend to give it a good lead time out there, so it's not going to be like, you know, it's out for three weeks and that's it, you know, discuss-
Actually, we've already had four, four firms-
Inquiries.